... adequate notice of this meeting has been provided, specified in the act, proper notice of this public meeting was provided. Said notice was posted at the emphasis of the Board of Education Office, Melton and Nutley Sun, The Star, Washington Journal, Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal, Melton and Nutley Township Clerk, Advertise of Nutley Sun, posted on our district website. This is an official meeting. In consideration of all your present recognition of the importance of these proceedings, it is requested that all cell phones and pings be turned off for silence for the duration of the meeting. Stand for President, please. President, please.
The United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Global, Mr. Proctor, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton, here. Mr. Camaro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Koepka?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Soler?
Mrs. Sazada?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Superintendent, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. First and foremost, I want to thank the Rotary of Nutley. Once again, welcome in fact to the administration of the district. It's an annual event that they have. Thanking members of Board of Education who were able to attend, well as members of the community. It is again great to see that as evidence of how the community does support our schools. We've had numerous comments coming through either directly to me or through members of the board as to how impressed people with the highly qualified staff members we've been able to hire over the past year. And again, it just reaffirms our commitment to making sure we have the absolute best people working for the kids here in Nutley. Our school improvement panels, which again are teacher administrative leaders who get together to make sure our teachers are getting exactly what they need when it comes to professional development. We met on Tuesday the 17th, outline the plan for the year and making sure, as you know, we have a lot more professional development embedded in our calendar this year. We want to make sure that every second counts, so they will continue to mean. When it comes to professional development, language arts tier one and tier two, continuing their training. The next dates are October 17th and 18th, with Shelley Klein coming back into work with our teachers again, moving around multiple buildings. Math and math has basically continued. We've been running professional development in some way, shape, or form for teachers teaching math throughout. As teachers have become more willing to voice their concerns and their questions, we've been able to make sure we have extra sessions targeting specifically what they need. On November 5th, all of our K8 teachers who teach math, we engage in a full day of professional development again. We've spaced them out between our language arts, our math, and our science throughout the year to make sure we're constantly fine tuning what we're doing in the classrooms. Which brings me to October 11th, this Friday, which is our first full day of professional development. We're focusing on mandatory trainings that state requires of all districts. On Friday, they will include affirmative action training as well as suicide prevention training. The rest of the day will be job specific, whether we talk to paraprofessionals or CHL team members. The majority of our staff, our faculty, will be engaged in conversations on common assessment. I've been talking about performance matters for about a year since the board allowed us to bring the tool in, but now we're getting full training for all of our teachers on performance matters, and we're focusing on the state mandated student growth objective process that they're requiring of us moving forward. Importantly, trying to get this out there, it's on our website. I thank the PTO should turn it around and send it out to their parents as well. But as promised, Ms. Klein, our literacy specialist consultant, will be hosting a parent information night here at the middle school this Thursday at 6:30, talking about exactly what our readers workshop model is and what parents can be doing at home as far to support what's going on in class, but also so that they're understanding what's going on in the classroom so parents can be more involved in talking with the teachers. Special Services had a pretty big meeting last week, I'm going to link to Mr. Klein for his update. Mr. Material, World Language, again, I want me to highlight, we're looking for parent feedback on our World Languages program. We've had over 100 people already respond to the survey that he's opened up, but just to remind you, the survey's there. You can access it by going to our website, and our department's going through World Languages. There's a link directly to the survey. We're looking to see what parents would think about our World Languages program, what they want to see moving forward. We've got some great feedback, but we're hoping to get some more. It was supposed to have been closed this past Friday, but he's going to leave it open for the rest of the week. So I'm trying to tweet that out again, and if we can get that information out to any parents who are interested in giving us some information, it would be greatly valued. I have a new one for the board. I've talked about this a couple times across with the academic committee here in Nutley. I'm really excited, one of the things I found out when I came here new, we offer the humanities course for juniors and mostly seniors at the high school. It is a course that combines the English language arts, social studies, as well as our performing arts, all in one. It's taught by three different teachers who rotate in and out, and prepares students for one of our AP language tests. So it's a terrific course, kind of bringing all of our learning together. Working with the teachers all over the last two years, month, whom is Mr. Odell, but also working with Ms. Rizil, she and I shared a number of favorite texts, if you will. There's pieces of literature, and we also disagree on a couple key ones, so we've had some good conversations. Last year, the idea came up that I would actually join the teaching staff as a rotating member of the faculty in this class, so instead of having three teachers, they'd have four. And so I joined the class first week of school, and we talked about the role that each of the teachers, myself included, would play. Today, actually, was today was my first session leading the students in class, so I had a wonderful time. I'm hoping that they had a wonderful time. I still wait to hear, to get the feedback.
Who evaluated you?
Well, actually, it turns out, it was really funny, because a lot of administrative teachers who wanted to do 20s, they're all telling me they'll come next time. I am concerned now that word really does get out, that the next time I do teach, there'll be more teachers in the room than there will be, there are worse things. I think it's a great experience, and we're really trying to increase the numbers of the program, get the word out that students should be working towards a class like that throughout their middle and high school career. And my hope is that the numbers don't go down now that word is out that I'm one of the teachers. Upcoming events, important events coming up. We're kicking off, this is our Week of Respect. Our staff members wore blue today. It was a statewide initiative to stomp out bullying. The Week of Respect kicked off today, and we'll have Mr. Capella back in November to kind of sum up, but there are a great number of activities going on across the district, P-12. If you're interested in it, there are a number of different websites on our web pages on our website that allow parents to get involved, the PTOs are involved, a number of teachers, there are too many different activities for me to list, but it's just a great week. Healthy You kick off. We've had Healthy You in Washington School for a number of years, but they've expanded the program, and we're having a full kickoff this Thursday on the 10th. Talk a little bit more about it in a second. Our parent literacy night, I mentioned again, this Thursday night, 6:30 here in the middle school. Really excited about homecoming on Saturday. Football games at home again, full day of packed Saturday of exciting events. At the same time, we have the head of the Paseg Regatta, where our crew team will be competing against a slew of other teams from other schools. And those are always exciting events if you've never attended any kind of regatta on the water, it's definitely an experience I highly recommend. Wanted to highlight again, we're having our AP parent meeting for parents of students who are in any AP class in the high school. Myself, Mr. Williams, Mr. Francia, Ms. Davilio will all be there. We want to make sure we're having conversations with parents about what it means to be an AP, what they should be looking at through the year, and what in our minds translates as successful participation in that level class. So that's happening on the 29th. And then just thinking ahead to November, American Education Week, we're in 100. All the people who make education where it is for kids, we meet November 18th. I want to thank the guidance department. On September 29th, we had our college fair, 115 colleges again, coming here to talk with our students and give them experience. We had student volunteers, our staff at O'Connell, a great pad, and a number of board members are around, those who have children, but also I just want to see the event. I was there as well, and it's great to talk to the college recruiters because most of the time recruiters focus on specific areas, and they give us feedback on how our students are faring through the application process. That's feedback we take seriously, making sure that we're listening to what they're saying, and we're trying to do our best to prepare our students for that level of competition. Again, return to Healthy You. It's New Jersey's largest and most comprehensive statewide initiative that addresses childhood obesity. It's a specific program. We partner with the YMCA State Alliance, and it brings in song, yoga, zumba, a number of things to get kids active, a lot of professional development for the teachers that are involved, and we're looking forward to the kickoff with Mr. Jones over at Washington School on Thursday. Two last pieces, if I may. I just met with Commissioner Scarpelli, and he asked me to try and help get the word out, especially for parents traveling to schools, in an effort to maintain the level of quality we expect of our roads here in Nutley. They do a fantastic job, but in order to make that happen, sometimes things need to be shut down. Mr. Farrar, extra department meeting. There are two different pieces that we want people to know about. First, we're going on Bloomfield Avenue between Harrison and the Nutley Beltway border, beginning tomorrow. The street will be shut down. Information is posted on the community websites, township website, as well as the front page of our district website. Again, trying to get all the information out because it may impact travel, not just in general, but to schools. The other area, also beginning tomorrow, and possibly continue through the 18th, is that correct?
Yes.
On Edison Avenue between High Street and Kingsland Avenue. So impacting one for Lincoln School District and one for Springdale. Obviously, if you're in middle school or high school and you're driving as well, it's good for people to be aware. So we want to make sure we help get the word out because they're doing good things for our roads, and a little bit of inconvenience for years of safe driving. So, Mr. Kaczynski.
Thank you.
Firstly, we have received a notice today from the Township of Nutley Zone Board of Adjustment that a property at 36 Forest Avenue is going to construct a two-story addition with a six-foot, one-inch side yard setback within 200 feet of the school property. The public hearing is scheduled for October 21st, 2013, at 7:30 PM. And I will be forwarding this notice to Mr. Sazada.
Do we send some more?
I don't see where it is. Is this apartment? Or is this school? I'll go with that.
We are also working on the final specs for the wireless handheld devices, and I'm presently working with Eric Andrews, who's an attorney with State Price, to put together the final grid packet so that we can put that out for advertising. This Saturday, Liquid Church is running what they're calling their Love Day. They've approached the school district, as well as several organizations throughout the township, to do projects for us. So some of the projects they'll be doing on the school grounds are scraping and painting plant poles in front of all of the schools, painting some doors, doing a lot of work on the grounds, especially High Five Hill at Rathcliff, and in front of the high school and here at the middle school. So we're very pleased that they've approached us and made us part of that day, and for all their contributions. It's time for open enrollment for all of the health benefits and the flexible study council of the district, so that notice will be going out to all staff members tomorrow. And the open enrollment period will be from tomorrow through the middle of November. Any changes that employees wish to make will take effect January 1st of 2014. We're also going to begin some work on the 2012-13 audit this week, and the majority of the work will then be conducted throughout the month of November. And also, the annual fixed asset inventory will begin on October 15th, starting here at the middle school, and then they will go throughout the entire district, and prepare the reports that the auditors will then need to incorporate in the audit. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, you have a presentation from Mr. DiBiase or Mr. Mecca? I don't know who's going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board council. His name is Thomas DiBiase, representing Skender Mecca. This general information that Mr. Mecca has been a developer in town now for seven years. He has invested throughout our community and actually has taken an affinity to Nutley, and considers this his second home, Eppesworth and North Caldwell. And you have seen some of his projects throughout the town. The first one he did was across from Rotzdeli, and the second one's across from Caballo's, even establishments seems to be we like. And a big development on East Center Street. If you have not been down to the East Center Street, please do that, because it's amazing the transformation that has occurred there as a result of his investments. We just completed an 82-unit development in front of the planning board, and one of the conditions that we voluntarily made on the record is that we wanted to help out the Board of Education. And your buses are actually parked on that property, and that property was owned by the seller until two weeks ago, and you have had an ongoing lease arrangement with that owner for several years. You would have the exact amount of the lease, but we were told in general terms, it's either $1,725 a month or $1,750 a month. And what I placed on the record in front of the planning board with Mr. Mecca's permission was that we would stop lease payments from the day that we took ownership of the property, and that occurred about two weeks ago. We also put on the record that we would stage our development so that the last place that we would impact on is where your school buses are. And we anticipate that that would be at least eight months from now, being very optimistic, probably more realistically, about one year from now. And then we would also give you three months' notice as we were going to start to move our construction into that staging area. We would be willing to sign an agreement with your board council or with you immediately. I believe that one of your rent checks was already mailed out, and we will refund that to you. And the only thing we should have corrected on the record is what the exact amount of the payment is.
We'll get that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, Mr. DiBiase, but you're welcome to leave also if you'd like.
We're actually going to go get something neat, but thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Good luck.
This time we'll have committee reports.
We met on October 3rd. It was headed up by Dr. Schipenau, Director of Special Services. We had parents from preschool up through high school, some of which are in the audience today. First and foremost, we tried to establish a meeting time for future meetings. November 15th is going to be our next meeting. We're trying to keep it around the first Wednesday of the month. Timeframe, we said between 60 and 90 minutes, the agenda established by the committee. Obviously, our first meeting, we had a robust conversation. We lasted well over two hours, which we expect. Topics included preschool programs, IP services, Special Olympics, trying to develop stronger community and school ties with our Special Olympics. Also discussed the added case management that was produced by the board, allowing more funds, and the impact that it's had on our case management responsibilities in the district. And then we discussed our self-contained programs within the high school. A lot of good conversation came of it. We expect more conversation and ideas to be generated from this good meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate your involvement. Mr. Farrar, anything?
No.
All committee reports?
Thank you.
We now come to a portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this session, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. On board regulation, allow 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic has been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please do remind them that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please, your members, go, we state your name and address each and every time you address the board. The first person wishing to speak can come forward.
Is this about policies, Mr. President?
Okay. Terry Clark, 45, hands in place, spokesperson for the Nutley Parent Advocacy Network. I just wanted to ask a question about the first review of the inappropriate staff conduct. It's 428-01. I don't know if that's up there for anyone. It talks about the Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all pupils within this school district, and this is something that, of course, is very important. But on the bottom of the page, it talks about school staff members are advised to be concerned with such conduct, which may include but are not limited to communications and/or publications, using emails, text messaging, social network sites, or any other medium that is directed and/or available to pupils or for public display. Now, this includes not just staff, but administrators, everybody, right? It's across the board?
Yes.
Okay. On the second page, it talks about, it talks about in the event that the report alleges conduct by the building principal or their immediate supervisor, the school staff member may report directly to the superintendent of schools. So I just wanted to know, on the bottom of the page, it says that this may include but is not limited to, and they're talking about all the types of things that can be done after the investigation is done, and it says this may include but is not limited to notifying law enforcement, notifying the Division of Child Protection and Pregnancy, and I believe that's probably DIFIS that they're referring to. So my question is, does the superintendent usually contact DIFIS when there is a question about staff misconduct that goes against a student, that involves a student? Is that something that is usually done? Is that part of the practice?
Is the information coming to me that the first time someone's been reporting that I'm required to contact CPP, what was DIFIS?
Okay. And does the district keep like a record of any kind of conversations that you have with DIFIS on this? Are you required to keep a record?
Phone calls that we make?
Yes, to DIFIS.
We can give back and forth. We don't keep a straight record necessarily, whatever call.
Okay. On page, it's on under the number six, under inappropriate conduct. It includes but is not limited to sexual misconduct, a request by a school staff member to a pupil for a social relationship outside of the school-staff-pupil relationship, sexually harassing conduct, inappropriate touching by the staff, on and on. The question that I have here is that what happens if there's a situation where there is a school staff member that is inappropriate towards a parent? Does that include that, or is that something completely different?
Am I understanding this is specific to staff people?
Right.
We have other policies that refer to adult contact, and is when we talk about CPP, or we're talking about affirmative action?
Okay, so that goes under affirmative action. Okay. And it goes on to explain in very great detail about the investigation and the different types of procedures that are done. And my question is, if on number 10, on the very left page, it says, "Any person who is not satisfied with the superintendent's determination may appeal to the Board of Education." How does one do that? I'm just wondering, is that a written request to the board? Does it go through the superintendent? My question is, can the Board of Education deny a request for a meeting? I'm just a little confused about how that actually happens.
As far as the review process itself, it goes behind this policy, but if someone's not satisfied with the determination of the superintendent, they may respond in writing, which I'm required immediately for the board president, and the board takes the matter from there.
Okay. So at no time can a parent or teacher or whoever has the complaint, they can request the board hearing, or that's something that they have to think about?
They can appeal the decision to the board. What happens after that depends on the situation.
Okay.
Not necessarily a hearing.
Okay. So all the information from the investigation is then given to the board?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Well, then how would the board know?
Depends on the situation. I can't, I think there are obvious situations where depending on the appeal, everything would then go to the board president, and probably depending on the situation, could convene an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
There are a number of different things that could happen, which would be appealed to the Board of Education.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else wants to do the board? Mr. Reed, will you take academic resolution 1 and 2, please?
I'm just supposed to present, I think, academic resolution 1 through the table.
Second.
Local call, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton? Yes. Mr. Camaro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepka?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. After the fact, whether there are any discussions on any of the persons, I'm sorry. Mrs. Sazada, will you take special resolution 1 through 3?
Yeah, Mr. President, I move administration resolutions 1 and 3 as written.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Kopp.
Discussion? Local call, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Camaro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepka?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Finance, Mr. Kopp?
Yes, Mr. President. I move finance resolutions 1 through 6 as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Did we go out for bid for approval of the professional services for items number 2, 3, 4, and 5?
Last year, we went out for RFP for the architect.
Okay, but not for these specific contracts?
No, not for each individual one. Using an architect record.
Okay. But our policy usually states that we have to go out for all the contracts? Is that correct, or no?
Is there any satisfaction, there's more? Discuss?
Just know, this is a release for proposals from Ravino.
I think this answer, my question was that we need to go out, even though we've gone out on RFP for an architect, we need to go out every time we make some changes?
No, as long as you have an architect record, you can continue to be prepared for them. Any architectural services that you have, that's why you have an architect record. Okay. What? Do you have a turn?
Every time I probably turn it on.
You have a mountain chief?
Say it again.
For the RFP, is there not to exceed what the particular vendors? It all depends upon what you're actually doing the RFP for. When you're doing it for professional services, it's to have that individual on staff, so that as you need them, they can provide the services that the board requires. So there's usually a dollar and an hourly fee, but sometimes they use the hourly fee, and other times they will package it together and just give you one fee for a particular project.
Also, once we know, we talk both the finance and administrative committee, when we know these projects exist, a lot of times will give us that question, if we're going to do this work, it's going to take this much. So while we're not going to, we've hired the architect, we want the board to know how much it's going to cost just to do the work before we submit this.
Is there also a not to exceed amount that would have to come in front of the board if it was over a certain amount? As far as that was? Well, if there was something that wasn't cost over a certain amount as far as fees?
We want to make sure we're making something like that from there that we're going to first, it's not an inquiry.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I just have one other thing. The two contracts that are being funded by the 2007 referendum, is that being funded with the extra money we had, or is this things that were in the referendum that haven't been done yet?
These were two of the additional projects that we are now doing with the remaining funds of the referendum.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Local call, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Camaro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepka?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sazada?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes. Mr. Klein, will you take the personal resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move personal resolution 1 as written.
Second.
Any discussion? There were two changes, we need to know those changes.
No, they're on the table.
Local call, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Camaro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Koepka?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within those requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me, same as above. Anyone who wants to address the board, please start.
Hi, Diane Bolton, 53 Lakeside Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, Nutley CPAC rep. First of all, on a great note, I just would like to say that we have, that end pan had the first training for teachers at Spring Garden, and it went phenomenal. We had 29 participants, of which we received actually not only an email from the principal, but also from a teacher thanking us on how beneficial that workshop was. So we're really excited about that, and we're really excited about doing more workshops. It went really well. We provided food, they had a lot of fun, and we all did it within an hour, and I think they learned a lot, so it went really good. So that's on a good note. On a separate note, I'm just kind of curious, for the 2013-2014 school year, how many trainings are actually scheduled by the district for children who have special needs?
For the children, for the teachers?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the teachers, pardon me, for the teachers on special education. Let me rephrase that, my target.
The specific special education teachers or the general education teachers as well?
A general one as well.
As of right now, I don't get many.
So we really don't have any scheduled yet?
The general teachers, no. Yes, specific trainings, even including this Friday, are specific to special education teachers or the CST members. Not necessarily, as you and I have talked in the past about general education.
Right.
Teachers being professionally developed when it comes to managing issues in special education.
Is that something that we're gonna consider, or is that something that we're gonna look into as these teachers are dangling? I mean, they're struggling.
Well, as I spoke to you about, we were absolutely case in point when we agreed to work together to get you into the buildings when you were so gracious with those lunch and lunch. We're pressed for time, you know that. We definitely wanna make a commitment to make this happen, but it's not just special education when it comes to professional practices, things that can be used in general education practice.
Right.
We're aware of that. It's just with everything, the state requirements, the mandates, and all the changes, we're extremely pressed for time, but we definitely wanna make sure.
Which includes special education.
Absolutely, yes. And again, for the teachers that are directly impacted by those changes and those mandates, we're making sure that they're aware.
Okay, great. On a separate note, again, this is completely different, it was brought to my attention by a parent that allegedly the director has been changing aides without the parent's knowledge, which we know is something that she can do, and that's not arguable. The concern is that apparently the outgoing aide is not really training for providing feedback to the incoming aide on the child to ensure a smooth transition. So is there a way that maybe we can formulate a plan so if they are gonna change aides? If you're unaware, special ed kids have great difficulty with change in general and transition. So you have a kid who has one aide, and then the next day they have somebody else, you know, this could be very challenging. So I'm just wondering if we could have some sort of plan in place to address that particular issue.
I can tell you that, I wouldn't necessarily direct it to the director, but can you direct it to the supervisor and the case managers?
Right.
Possibly put in place in the case, depending on the individual student. I can tell you that there were a number of transition plans this year alone, because they take into account how individual students could have an impact on that. I don't know if anybody was being switched to the day of, but no, perhaps, unless there was an issue with the staff member that was beyond our control.
Like I said, ledger.
So I can't speak to that, but I can let you know that the work we've got to process with the parents, but also as a staff, we're trying never to make an idea return on any student.
Okay, that's good to hear. I hope not, especially without the parent knowing. That's also, no, the parent can also help to prepare the student.
We talked about communication with all of our parents, not just those.
I know communication is a big issue.
We're big on that, we're still working, we'll always do it better. Making sure that as a team, if there is one to be changed, that all the adults supporting that student are aware and behind that change, so that they can support that student together.
Perfect, thank you.
Terry Clark, 45 Hampton Place, spokesperson for Nutley Parent Advocacy Network. I just have two issues. Now that we have our autistic children, our older population going into Lincoln School, there tends to be some problems with, not so much with the aides, but with the fact that they're older boys, they tend to be boys, and they really continue to have toileting issues, and it presents problems because if you have a female aide and it's a boy who's 10 or 11 or 12 years old, it becomes a problem, it's uncomfortable. So we're just asking if you can please consider having male aides for, as the children get older, because we'd like to keep them in district as long as possible, but really to fulfill their needs and to make them more comfortable, something very simple as a male aide, it can kind of, you know, avert any type of problems that we have in personal problems such as that. And I have just one concern, well, it came to our attention, and this is the perfect time to tell you, because this is right before you start really thinking about the budget, but there seems to be a real problem in regards to the gym classes in three of the five elementary schools. There seems to be double classes, and say that there's a class, there's, I don't know, about 35 classes over at Lincoln, there seems to be like 29 of them or had double classes along with special ed classes that are put in there. Double classes are also existing over in Yanacaw and in Washington, and really, you know, this is for gym, and because gym tends to be so active, we really would like to see if we can have like, say, a part-time teacher in there if we can't afford a full-time teacher, and split up those classes so that we can really meet the needs of those students. And, you know, we have a very large special ed population in Lincoln, and that becomes like a real issue. If you have two double classes, say, two third grades that are 25 kids in a grade, and now you're going to put in a special ed class that might have eight or nine students, that runs the numbers up, and you really have to think about what is that teacher doing to contain all those children and what's happening for them. So if the board can really consider trying to beef up that department with additional either part-time or full-time people to help out there. And I know space is an issue, but we did teach the teachers brain gym, and there's a whole bunch of exercises that go with brain gym, so, you know, that's something that you can split classes and put one class in their own classroom and have them do brain gym, or something that's, they're not gonna be running around. It's going to be something that's going to be more stable, so that's just a request that we have. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to address the board?
Good evening, my name is Demani Pulese, I'm with AD One Hawthorne, and I am a new parent to the district. My husband and I just bought our home here over the summer, and I would like to say that I am very, I would like to commend the staff at the Spring Garden School for making the transition easier for my first grader, who's very sensitive, and it was a difficult transition for him, and particularly his teacher, Mrs. Rizzuto, Mrs. LaGuardia, the wonderful woman at the extended day program, just made it so much easier for him, and I'm very grateful for that. Second issue I would like to address are the recent changes to the extended day program. I would just like to express my disappointment, again, having moved into town, having researched other towns, other districts, and the programs they have, and having seen that Nutley, at the time that I was researching, had the same care running with the school calendar that the other districts did, and to find very quickly into the school district that this was gonna be a change was a disappointment. So I would just like to ask that sometime in the next year, that other alternatives are looked into for care, other districts do run with the calendar, they have found alternatives, whether they run it themselves or they outsource it, as the case may be. I'm very familiar with those programs, so I would love to provide solutions for you, but for those of us who are not from town, who don't have family from town, who are not from the area, they are very difficult to cover. Sorry, I get upset when I'm passionate about something. So I hope to make friends in the meantime, you know, to cover some of those days. A primary concern are the first three days of school, where it would be impossible for me to take three days' worth of time to cover my children. Like I said, I hope to make friends, but I'll have two kids in school next year, and that would be a good friendship indeed, to take my two little land bugs to his place. So please just consider it, please look into alternatives to help those of us who do not have flexible schedules and do not have support networks. Thank you.
Thank you. That has been an ongoing discussion, and I'm sure it will continue. Anyone else who wants to address the board?
Hi, Sylvia Haynes from Sixteen Cottage Place. I just wanted to say how pleased I was with the information I'm getting from the website for the middle school. The teachers are really on track with keeping their websites up to date with information, chock full of information. I got an email on Friday telling me that the progress reports were on, and they were gonna be there by 3:30. They were. So I just wanted to thank everybody, because some of it's working, and I'm really pleased. I'm hoping to see that the elementary school will start to get to that level as well, but the information I'm getting from the middle school is worlds different, so thank you.
Thank you. We're glad to hear that, too, and most of the board members are working on the lower grades to make them more informative. Thank you. Anyone else who wants it to be heard? Any old business coming forward to board? Any new business becoming forward to board? I have a couple new visits I have, Russ and I have talked about, and I just wanted to link them up publicly as a problem. We've talked about some type of a math presentation to the parents to familiarize them more than we tried already with the actual math problems in the lower grades.
Yeah, the same way we're having Mr. Klein come in to talk to parents about doing literacy, we're hoping to have similar presentations for parents about our math series. One of the things we had talked about is actually giving some teachers some time, we actually have some of our own teachers' presentations, so that parents can come and see what third grade math is, what fourth grade math is, what the general philosophy behind the shift is. And again, I give the teachers the credit for handling so many changes at the elementary at once, which is why sometimes the website can be difficult to get to. But, you know, they chose this series, and we want to make sure that they have some time, make their heads around it, and we get the parents as well, because there's a very specific parent component to the series that we purchased that allows instruction to go just beyond the classroom into the home and support parents and kind of reiterating what happens in the classroom and rebuilding that capacity with the children.
Yeah, I just wanted to interject with my daughter who's in seventh grade. I've gone to the website, the teacher did provide a lot of information, and the parent resources there are really great, there's videos out there, teach, reteach, teach me now, also practice, information that the children can do, so it has been very helpful.
And partly go back to communication, you have a letting people know that those resources are there, making sure you have your login, you can access the website, but they're there now, we want to make sure.
Yeah, even though we've tried numerous times to get the word out to parents, I feel as if the grammar school parents sometimes are not totally aware of what is out there for them, so we thought maybe some type of little presentation.
No, that's a great idea.
The math teachers in grammar schools would help clear some of that. The other minor issue that I want to talk about was, and speaking to some people who, from the press in our audience, sometimes when you give a presentation, or sometimes when the department needs to give a presentation, we run through it here, they put the presentation up. If we could give that to them in some type of a format, a work format, so they could, rather than having to stay there and try to jot some notes down, they could have specific information on what we did.
So not the presentation itself, but what was said?
Yeah, yeah.